Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'd like to ask the Pastor, Mr. Byron Fair to lead us in our prayer tonight. We'll go right from the prayer into the pledge of allegiance.
God, we do thank you so much for today and just the blessings of life that you've given us, God, the rain that you've sent our way to nourish our land, God. We ask now, though, that you come into this room, God, intervene in our business here tonight, God, be with each person that has a part here, God, that you would just touch them with your wisdom and your guidance for the future of not only this city but our country. We ask all of us now in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Swan, call roll please.
President Logan.
Present.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Sims.
Here.
Councilman Harper.
Here.
We'll have a corner, Mr. President.
Thank you. Your Honorable Mayor Bobby Hernan has a couple presentations and a proclamation.
Welcome, everybody, thank you for being here. Larry. Two very outstanding department heads for the city of Northport and, don't get embarrassed, I'm going to do a proclamation for National Public Works Week. And these guys doing awesome, awesome job. So, here we go. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water treatment, water supply, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, storm sewers, solid waste collection, streets and highways, traffic signals, rights of ways, fleet maintenance, public buildings and other structures, facilities and systems essential to serve our citizens. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of dedicated public works professionals, engineers, managers, superintendents, operators and other employees of the Northport Utility Department, Public Works and Engineering Departments, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff these departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, and whereas the year 2016 marks the 56th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, Bobby Hernan, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the great city of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, to be National Public Works Week in the city of Northport, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Thank you very much. Also, we have a couple awards, and it's, you know, it seems like it's just, uh, year after year after year after year, and sometimes we don't take it as, we don't appreciate it as much, but let me tell you, I always appreciate what you do. And this is the Alabama Water Environment Association 2015 Excellence Award for Domestic Water Treatment, Category Two, and goes to City of Northport Wastewater Treatment Plant, City of Northport. Hey, I appreciate it, man. Also, this is a two-year award, the Alabama Water Environment Association, Excellence Award presented to City of Northport Wastewater Treatment Plant, Domestic Wastewater Treatment Category Two, in recognition of the operations achieved by the operators of this plant for the 20 years, uh, 2014 and 2015. Thank you again, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five is approval of the agenda in our pre-meeting, Mr. Swan and Mr. Davis's office brought to council, requested addition, that's going to be item 8B6. This is in regards to our levee on the north side of Rice Mine Road's going to need some repairs, and to do so, Mayor and council will have to discuss property acquisition and temporary easements to get these labor repairs done. So, this is an addition, item 8B6. So, that being said, I will approve the agenda with the addition of item 8B6. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item six is visitors to address the council. Dennis Hambright, I know you're on the, you're on the agenda, you're going to wait till the public comment? Okay, thank you. Moving forward, item 7A1 is a second reading on the unfinished business, it's an ordinance declaring the sales tax holiday or back-to-school holiday. Mr. Davis, this is just a second reading, we've done this for numerous, numerous years, and this is basically the sales tax holidays where we go in and we can have some relaxed sales taxes on, on our various items for back-to-school supplies and electronics and computers and things of that nature, is that correct? I'll make that as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item 8B1 is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing their disposal. Ms. Starnes, this is, is it one vehicle, Ms. Starnes? Reached its useful life and has asked the council and mayor to approve the resolution. So, with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Second item is a resolution awarding the bid file for Kentuck Park Sanitary Sewer Improvements, Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Mayor, members of council, as you, as you're aware, the Utilities Department has 27 lift stations in our system, and we have a program in place to either replace or overhaul those, and we're trying to do one a year. This year, it was the Kentuck Lift Stations, the, uh, the one was up, was up for replacement. We investigated several options to either upgrade or replace the station. Instead, we decided to go with a gravity sewer option to eliminate the lift station. We received six bids on this project, BW Hobson was the lowest bid at $205,691 and, I believe, eighty cents, and at this time, we're requesting a resolution authorizing approval of the bid and authorizing the city administrator to execute the documents related to the project.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the bid file for the Kentuck Park Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to BW Hobson Construction in the amount of $205,691 and eighty cents, and authorizing our city administrator's office to execute the necessary documents and requisitions needed to proceed with the project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Third item is a resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to enter into an agreement for copier maintenance. Mr. Ingram, this is basically a, a annual lease to a Task Alpha Certified Pre-Owned Copiers for your Water Utilities Division within a specified amount of sixty-nine, excuse me, $6,960, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
I'll make that as a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the city administrator's office to enter into an agreement with Keosera Document Solutions to lease a Task Alpha Certified Pre-Owned Copier for the Utilities Division in the amount of $6,960. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilmember Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item four is a resolution terminating our finance director in our pre-meeting. Mr. Davis gave us a brief update on that one in our pre-meeting regarding some of the issues, it's a personnel matter, so a motion to approve the resolution terminating the employment of finance director.
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion, my Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Harper. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
I abstain, I don't have enough information to determine one way or the other.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item five is a resolution naming an interim finance director, Mr. Davis. Thank you, I have a motion to approve the resolution naming Ms. April Hoffman as the interim finance director for the city of Northport.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Thank you, that's a motion, my Councilman Harper, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
I abstain.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six is the added agenda item, ladies and gentlemen, that's a resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to negotiate purchase agreements for two parcels of land and one temporary easement for our lever repair north of Rice Mine Road. Mr. Swan, do you want to give a little bit of synopsis regarding this?
Mr. President, if it's, uh, acceptable to the council, I'll let Mr. Davis discuss this, property acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is, uh, Northport, Old Ivy Drive, Northport, 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 Northport,
Second by Councilmember Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item C is our consent agenda. We have seven items to report. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, and P O requisitions for our G I S software and fire hydrants. Uh, we're going to buy a bunch of fire hydrants to, uh, install in our water's distribution system. That totals fourteen thousand, one dollar and zero cents for those fire hydrants. Again, this is seven items for consent agenda approval. I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper? Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Harper?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none to report. Item ten is public hearings. We have none to report. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Swan?
Mr. President, I have only one, one thing out. I thought it would be appropriate that since we're at the end of our first quarter of the fiscal year of twenty sixteen to kind of give you an overview of our budget position and fund status. Uh, this is by no means a detailed report, but just kind of give you kind of an overview until we get the detailed reporting. The finance department was good enough to provide me with, uh, the information. But currently we are, uh, with the completion of our fourth, uh, first quarter, we're thirty-three percent through the budget year. Uh, our revenues and the general fund, uh, we have received approximately forty percent of the budgeted revenues for the year. Uh, that puts us slightly ahead, uh, of the budget schedule, but that's, uh, due to business license renewal at the first of the year. Uh, our water and sewer fund has, is approximately twenty-three percent through the budget. Uh, that, of course, is slightly lower than the thirty-three percent, but that's typical because we haven't hit the hot summer months yet when we have our highest, highest water sales. Uh, expenditures, uh, administrative, legal, and finance department have expended twenty-two percent of their budget, so they're under budget uh, for the time period. Engineering and planning, uh, are at thirty-one percent. Fire department is at thirty-seven. Uh, thus slightly more than thirty-three percent, of course, but I believe that's probably due to equipment purchases, uh, which are, which are one-time purchases. The police department is right on budget with thirty-four percent of their expenditures. Public Works is also on bu- on, uh, budget with their expenditures of thirty-two percent. Uh, with your information, our general fund reserve stands at about two point three million dollars, and our water and sewer reserve currently stands at about one point three million. Uh, overall, it appears that our city funds are, are healthy and budgeted, budgeted revenues and expenditures are in line. And I'll provide the, uh, uh, mayor and council with, uh, this summary, uh, in writing, uh, by the end of the week.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Item twelve, departmental business. We have none to report. I know, ladies and gentlemen, in our pre-meeting, I suggested to mayor and members of council that we reactivate our committees to where we can be proper informed, and you'll probably see the next few weeks and months, we'll have some, um, meetings with council, chairing certain committees such as finance, public works, public safety, and admin and property or litigation. So you'll see those coming, and our, our staff will also be getting ready to back to reporting to citizens in our normal council meeting, so wanted to add that bit of information. Item thirteen is public comment. We have, uh, four citizens sign to speak. Uh, Mr. Schwab, you're first one up. Thank you. State your name and address for the record. Got a three limit, three-minute time limit.
Uh, Steven Schwab, twenty-five, twenty-fifth street, Northport. First of all, I wanted to note that in the approximately ten years that we have lived in, uh, old downtown Northport, uh, we have noticed a number of changes, uh, on our street. Um, recently, several houses that were in need of renovation and repair uh, have been renovated, and that's a very good thing. Um, but the most important thing that we've noticed is the tremendous increase in, uh, traffic and also noise, uh, on, um, the street of, uh, Fifth Street. And, um, it's, we now have regular traffic jams at all hours of the day and early evening in particular, uh, including at three, three-thirty in the afternoon. And that, to some extent, is understandable, I think, because of the fact that the metropolitan area has grown enormously, uh, in the time that we've lived there, from about fifty thousand to well over two hundred thousand. But, um, the speed, uh, of cars, uh, in, along Fifth Street going forty-five, fifty miles an hour, sixty miles an hour, uh, has unfortunately become commonplace. And the noise pollution of, uh, cars, uh, and trucks, especially trucks with Jake brakes, uh, waking residents up at three o'clock in the morning is also something that is occurring. Now, last week, I was speaking to my neighbor, Patrick Swan, and he said to me, uh, "Well, Mr. Schwab, I've lived here all my life in Northport, and, uh, I expected to be, uh, for there to be heavy traffic along Fifth Street." But he said, "But I never would have moved my young family down to Fifth Street had I known that cars would be speeding by at forty-five and fifty miles an hour, or at these eighteen-wheelers would be going along at the same rate of speed." It makes it a dangerous environment for children, for almost everyone. Um, and frankly, I wouldn't invite my, um, two-year-old granddaughter to come and visit me in Northport until this situation changes, and it needs to change now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwab. I was going to give you an update on our last meeting. I know your wife came up two weeks ago and, uh, expressed an interest in traffic control. On the short term, uh, Chief Burton's office will be doing some, uh, some traffic control items of importance. But I think if you get into a habit of doing something the same time, your speeders will get used to it, so I think he, he is wanting to do something a little different, maybe have some random, I, I call it random sampling of traffic and traffic control. So that's short term, and and long term, I can't really give you a solution right now, just simply because it's a, it's still a, considered a state highway. Is that right, Ms. Swan?
Mr. President, uh, speaking of, uh, the state, I just heard today, um, I shared this with, uh, a month or so ago with, with Mr. Schwab. The, uh, the Alabama Department of Transportation has, is, um, in studying the interchange at Fifth and, uh, Berlin, um, to improve, im- improve safety and, at the same time, uh, take a look at some traffic calming measures. They emailed me today and asked, uh, me to set up, uh, schedule a meeting next week with them, so they can, uh, give us, uh, the results of, of, of their study and, and, uh, give us an opportunity to talk to their consultant, um, on traffic calming. So, uh, I'm hopeful, uh, that we can move forward with that and with some sort of, uh, physical controls over the, uh, over the speed of the traffic, number one. Number two, uh, take a look at, at, uh, and this course will be to, uh, for the enforcement. Uh, take a look at the, uh, eighteen-wheelers that are, are not, uh, allowed on, are not supposed to be allowed on that road unless they are local delivery, and, and I can, uh, second what, uh, Mr. Schwab has said, that the eighteen-wheelers and the, and the speeding on, on Fifth Street are, um, have can, have gotten continually worse, so there's something needs to be done, and, and I'm sure this council will take a a favorable view at doing something about that.
I'd like to know, sir, it, on, on Fifth and Main, it just seems, I guess that's where I get, I'm there eating at Billy's, and I'm very nervous for pedestrians, because when that light's green, it seems that people, uh, you know, have at it like they're at Talladega. And it makes me nervous at, at that particular intersection, much less, I guess, y'all live up Fifth Street, presumably.
Thank you, Ms. Schwab. Thank you. Mr. Jody Jobson. Mr. Jobson, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jody Jobson. I live at fifteen thirty-four Bellwood Lane, Northport, and I'm here to address some of the things that's been going on. I do not believe with the termination of the past administrator that there was any backdoor anything. These people that are sitting up here doing the best they can for our city are not stupid enough to break a state law. And Mayor Herndon, you have really disappointed me by going on and crying on the TV and everything else about Scott was railroaded and you were going to do this. But I've got a few questions. Uh, Alabama state law requires the mayor, as chief executive officer, to present a written statement to the council at least once every six months showing the financial condition of the municipality and the steps the mayor proposes to take for the protection of the town or the city. Have you done this?
Guilty.
To what? Uh, are you familiar with any slush funds that are here in this past administrator's office?
Slush funds?
Slush funds. That nobody on the council had prob- uh, uh, had, had, uh, access to except him?
Uh, no, sir, I do not, and it'd be better if you talked that, if we're going to be talking about an individual who is not in the poised city of Northport.
Well, you get on the, you get on the radio and talk about it.
With good cause, good reason.
Talk about it.
Yeah, good reason.
Well, I got a good reason here.
Okay.
Do you know, you, you stated in the paper yesterday that the money was transferred out of the, the health, into the health fund from the reserve fund, and it was put back. Which fund did he take it out of to put it back?
What Mr. Collins did, as everybody up here knows, he took money out of the reserve fund. We had a shortfall of our health insurance funds. So he took money out of the reserve fund, put it in there to take care of that. When the funds got bit back, he put them in there.
Okay. I, I'll say that, but did he have the permission of the council?
Uh, those are restricted funds for capital projects, yes, sir.
So the council voted for him to do that? So the council?
No, I didn't say the council, Jody. I didn't say the council voted for him to do that. I said they're restricted funds. They can't be spent.
What, what fund did he get it, what, what do you call those funds where he's taking money in and out at his discretion? It's a shortfall, but if you, you have a budget over here for one thing, and you take, and your fault shortfall over here, somebody's done something wrong. I mean, there's something you gotta make it up, but these five gentlemen right here and this lady are the ones that make the decision if he can take money out of one fund and another one, not he.
Yeah, the reason it was shortfall, a lot of folks got sick.
Do what?
A lot of folks were sick and in the hospital. We're self-insured insurance.
That's my buzzer, Mr. Jody. I'm sorry, and I, I apologize.
There, uh, I'm on close on this thing right here. Until I heard that,
what?
Until I heard in there that the audit was going to be done next week and all that, uh, I was fixing to call for a state audit, because you, you just don't, without authority of council, I've been on the council before, and I know you don't move funds from one to another without a vote. And he doesn't have any authority to do that unless the council does it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jobson. Uh, next resident, Mr., excuse me, Reverend Robert Thomas. Pastor, thank you for coming. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Robert Thomas, uh, reside at thirteen six oh nine Old Ivy Drive, and I rise and address you this evening concerning, uh, M L King Junior Boulevard, the project's status. Uh, as you know, uh, this particular project, uh, was initially, uh, talked about and also proposed and funds set aside with gut part, city match part back in prior to two thousand and two. Uh, it's been going on now for about, uh, ten years, over a decade, and I used to run a business there on M L King, had a concern along with other, with other business people about the traffic. Uh, there was a study done, and I think it was some twenty-five, thirty thousand vehicles at that particular time, back about eleven years ago. Yeah, but since then, uh, traffic has tremendously increased. Uh, I am also at present employed by Care and Hands Health Equipment Supplies. They're in the same area storefront that used to be former Thomas Cleaners. So I still am aware of the problems and concerns of safety on M L King. And, uh, we try to have our vendors to make our freight deliveries between eleven A M and three P M to try to alleviate some of the, uh, traffic. But, uh, my concern is for safety also, uh, the potential accident ready to happen. When, uh, where do we stand, or the city stand at the present with the, uh, funding and, uh, the project itself?
Mr. President, I believe I can respond to-
Please.
Uh, Mr. Thomas, uh, Mr. Thomas is, Reverend Thomas is exactly correct. Uh, in his, uh, term of office, uh, started that project. That's been quite some time ago. Uh, the project has been off the boards and on the boards, um, back and forth. Uh, we are working with the, uh, Federal Highway Administration for funding, uh, for continuation of funding and ALDOT, and I hope, uh, Reverend Thomas to have something back before this council at the next meeting, um, to, to move that pro- project forward. It's, it's been on the back burner for way too long.
Okay, so then, what you're saying is that the next council meeting, we will have a definitive, uh, answer on where we stand in proceeding forward, or we're going to go back into another delay mode?
I hope we don't go back into another delay mode, because if we do, we're going to delay and lose our funds.
Yeah, you're going to lose those federal dollars if you keep delaying it, and I think it's technically-
The reason that I'm concerned too, because, you know, we all know as business people and just common sense individuals that, you know, the monies that was appropriated back over a decade ago doesn't buy the same amount of, uh, service and labor, uh, that today, uh, that it requires. So where are we going to get the additional funds to do and complete the project? And, uh, uh, what is the city's match? How much money is there for this particular project?
True. Uh, the actual city match fund, I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, pastor, but I, I do know that you're right. The dollar amount twenty years ago is not the same as it is now, so you know, you may be looking at a pared-down project. I know B K I was a consultant engineer on it, so it's almost, I have to charge, uh, Mr. Swan's office would give me that information in terms of exact match dollar amount that the city needs to be ready to, uh, move forward. But the biggest issue was making sure that you don't lose those federal dollars.
All right. Thank you much.
Thank you, pastor. Mr. Dennis Hambright. Thank you, Dennis. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dennis Hambright, fifty-one oh nine Isaiah Trail. Um, before I get into my comment, I want to ask something about the sewer project you was talking about earlier for Kentucky Park. Is that going to open up the public restrooms that's been closed for events? Will? That's great, because-
From what I understand, we, in the pre-meeting, I asked about how many folks I would accommodate as far as the bathrooms, and, and Larry, uh, said, you know, that right now, we don't know the capacity. It will be increased, uh, what it is, from what it is now, and we'll make it a whole lot more desirable venue for everything down that way. Am I saying that right, Larry?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, um, this will allow the restrooms to be open, however, it will not eliminate the need for additional facilities for large festivals. It'll just be an additional, I believe there are six restrooms or total down there, if I'm not mistaken, three on each side. Um, so that'll take the place of several of the porta toilets, yes.
That's good. I just wondered that had any playing with us losing the fiddle fest that we had last year. It went to Tuscaloosa this year, so I didn't know if that had anything to do with that. Okay, to my comment, a resident where I used to live on Thirtieth Street, Northport, I used to live at thirty-one oh one Thirtieth Street, and she lived right across the street, has asked for me, because she knew I come to the meetings to bring up the subject of the speeders, I guess the chief getting the list over there, on Thirtieth Street, uh, there used to be a speed bump when I lived there, and that's been quite a few years ago. And for some reason, that speed bump is gone now, but they do have a long shot before they get to a stop sign. And she said even the school buses are speeding, so she asked me just to ask y'all to either put the speed bump back, definitely look at it. Um, it's between Main Avenue and I think it's Twenty-Ninth Street, uh, Twenty-Ninth Avenue, where Thirtieth Street joins them together. It's a straight shot, except for a four-way stop sign before you go up a hill, so they don't slow down from the minute they get on it. And the speed bump used to be about halfway in between there. And they didn't speed when the speed bump was there, so anyway, that was my comment, so just hope somebody looks into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Uh, that's all the citizens we have to sign up to speak. Item fourteen is mayor and councilmember's business. I'll start with District One, Councilwoman Hayes.
I want to thank Mr. Ingram for his hard work and diligence and, um, great job in, uh, receiving the two awards and being recognized for that. And also Brooks Darnes, he's, um, they finally have a week, set aside a week for public services, and that's, uh, that's a, I think that's a department that sometimes gets a lot of criticism and overlooked, but they are, they are very hardworking people, and, um, they do, they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Under my district, I wanted to, uh, thank our first responders and police and fire, of course, sheriffs, deputies. We had a safety fair or Safe Kids Tuscaloosa Fair Saturday, and Councilman Sullivan and myself participated in a dunking booth, so if you missed the opportunity to dunk me and Rodney, you just missed it. It was Saturday. We didn't publicize it, so, uh-
Glad they missed it.
And, uh, it was well attended. I think our police really had a good showing, our, our public safety and our first responders, everybody was out. All of the kids that showed up actually got some good information on how to recognize a dangerous situation. Uh, so all of our first responders and police should be, uh, commended. Our fire department did a great job, so I really enjoyed it. Uh, and that's, that's all under my business. District Three, Councilman Sullivan.
Uh, just some quick updates on some projects. Uh, we got an email this morning from Planning, and I just want to pass this along to everybody. Um, the new Walmart Neighborhood Market is, uh, still on schedule to be, um, hopefully have their grand on, opening late summer, early fall. I saw the additional information that, right now on that. Coral Industries, um, their construction should be complete, um, by the end of this month, May. Um, they should start moving equipment and begin production sometime midsummer. Um, the Jacks, um, I think the weather has got them a little bit behind, but right now, they're still uh, scheduled to be open, up and running by, um, by July. Um, also, the first quarter for two thousand sixteen, we've had forty-four new residential building, building permits. Um, that, that's a huge increase from two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fifteen, there was twenty-seven. Um, certainly have a lot of interest in new home construction in Northport, so certainly good news, and I just wanted to pass that along to everybody.
Thank you. Uh, District Four, Councilman Sims?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. District Five, Councilman Harper?
I have no business, but I, I want to thank Mr. Swan for all he's done for the city of Northport. Really appreciate you, Mr. Swan, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon.
The, um, I know James Shirley, James, stand up a second if you will. You got, you got your honor flight shirt on. I know that, I think it's May the eleventh. May, May the eleventh is the next honor flight, be leaving the Tuscaloosa Airport between five-thirty and six A M in the morning. This is a flight, if you don't know it, that takes the World War II veterans, Korean War veterans, to Washington. I know James has been an integral part of that, for, you've probably been on all the flights, been on all the honor flights, and, uh, that, that means a lot to me. I've had the honor of seeing the, the national anthem when they, uh, before they take off, get on the plane with them, sing the national anthem for them, and it's awesome. But that's May the eleventh. Anybody that can, that can get out to the airport to, uh, see these heroes, send them off, you know, give them a welcome, it's, it's, uh, it's an awesome experience. And James, I thank you for wearing your shirt and, um, um, reminding me, but, uh, thank you so much. Uh, also, um, this coming Thursday, eleven forty-five, at, in front of the county courthouse, to be celebrating the National Day of Prayer. Uh, I've been honored again to be asked to sing the national anthem and get that kicked off. It starts eleven forty-five, and it's going to go to one o'clock. That's the National Day of Prayer out in front of, um, the Tuscaloosa County Courthouse. I know Rodney was talking about new business and things coming. I know we haven't emphasized a whole lot, but where the Waltons used to be is, uh, the new Marcos Pizza Place. It's a national-known, uh, pizza establishment. They were on, I know, undercover boss TV here not too long ago, um, but a great business. Um, I always try to talk about how much our sales tax revenue has increased, uh, to encourage more and more people to shop in Northport. Um, right now, and I said in, in twenty fourteen was up three percent, and twenty fifteen was up four percent to what we were the year before. So far this year, we're up six percent to what we were last year in sales tax revenue, which means more and more people are shopping in Northport, which means we have more and more money available for our police, our fire, our public works, to protect our citizens, uh, which is awesome, and thank you for shopping in Northport. Last thing, I'm also going to sort of go off the cuff here. I know, uh, Brother Byron has, has been here, uh, passed three or four meetings to, to say the prayer. Great young man, great family. And if it be the, the council's wishes, I haven't talked to him about this at all, if, if, if at least for the remainder of, of this term, he, uh, be named council chaplain to, uh, come up and help us out and maybe say the prayers, if that would be something you'd be willing to do, um, I would like to, to see that happen, Mr. President.
I don't see that as a problem, Mayor. I think it's a good idea. I didn't know-
Couldn't agree more.
Yeah. I really like that. Mayor, is that, is that all your business? All right. I wanted to, uh, close out before I say Happy Mother's Day. How about that? Everybody who's a mama, raise your hand. Everybody who's supported somebody, took care of somebody, raise your hand. Thank you. Give yourself a round of applause. Happy Mama's Day. How about that? Okay. All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, we're in our agenda, excuse me, adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harper. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you and have a good evening.